The committee of the hall to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 By the skin of his teeth. So I think we can dock him for being sociably late. Okay. So the first item on the agenda is a discussion item on Lake Region Healthcare Update by Kent Mattson. So Kent, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good morning. I'm Kent Mattson. I'm the chief executive officer at Lake Region Healthcare. I've been around the community for a while and leading Lake Region coming up on six years. So first of all, I wanted to thank the city and the city leaders for all of the hard work you've been doing to make Fergus Falls continue to grow and develop. We recruit a lot of people and it's a very competitive process to recruit physicians and advanced practitioners, new leaders. And when you do what you do and you make available what you make available and our city is safe, it makes it easier for us to be able to recruit. So we appreciate that and the things that you're doing are making a difference and we hear it when people come in and they can sense the community, the strength of it. So we're really pleased to be able to serve this community together with eight others in the region, as you'll see in a moment. I just wanted to give you an update. We try to get out to our government partners and share some of the things that we've been doing. So just kind of a reminder of what we do and where we are. And then also a little bit of a preview of a project that we've been working on for a number of years to make sure that your hometown healthcare is stable and remains locally governed. So we'll go through some slides here. Next slide, maybe. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. The government recognizes that certain services make companies eligible to be working in an income tax-free environment. What that allows us to do by not paying income taxes on our income is we can reinvest in our people and our places and our things to provide an essential service that the government otherwise provide if we weren't doing it. We're community-owned, we're community governed and locally-led. Many healthcare organizations have joined systems and become part of a system where the governance and the leadership is in a distant community. We partner a lot with the systems around us. They allow us to do our job to take care of our people. But we think that we can do better for the communities that we serve by having people make decisions, that is, our board members, that are from the community. All of them are our patients and definitely all of them live in our service territory, as you'll see in a moment. And we think the power of that is meaningful because if you're leading a regional system healthcare board, you're having to sit in a boardroom and think about what's best for Bismarck or Fargo or Wisconsin. And that competes for time and capital attention. Here, you'll see a picture of our region that our board members come from, hail from, and make decisions for. We're a mid-sized rural health system, meaning we're not like smaller healthcare organizations. You think about Hallock. Hallock serves the city of Hallock and a little bit around it with a smaller hospital and a little bit of primary care presence, mostly to kind of take care of some light things. Heavy things, they have to probably ship down to Grand Forks. We're also not a big organization. If you think about Center Care, Sanford, or Health Partners, those large organizations, the smallest, largest, closest to us would be Center Care with about 13,000 lives associated with their company. We've got about 1,300 between full-time and part-time at Lake Region Healthcare. There used to be probably 12 of us, tweeners, in between the bigs and in between the smalls. There's five of us left. Our peers have had to join systems. Geographic service territory, West Hunter, Minnesota, East Hurley, North Dakota. We, under our new strategic plan, as of October 1st, we are one company. We used to operate as two companies. So we took Lake Region Healthcare, that's been around since the 50s, and Prairie Ridge Healthcare, that had been around since the early 70s, and we merged them together to form one healthcare company. We merged our big company, Lake Region Healthcare, into our small company and it's now Lake Region Healthcare. So we merged with the same name, but we went down to one company. You'll hear a little bit about why. But through that structure now, we have two hospitals, one in Elbow Lake and one here, obviously. We have 10 clinic locations. We have a full-service cancer care center, which today is the only independent full-service cancer center in the state of Minnesota until Staples opens there up. The power of local commitment to our organization is that cancer center, when we started it about 13, 14 years ago, was fully funded by the community. Now, we have to take responsibility to operate and pay for it, but the community paid for the building and the equipment. We have Mill Street Residence, which is a senior living community. People feel comfortable when they can age close to a clinic and a hospital. So we try to make that available really well for those folks. And again, between full-time and part-time at Lake Region Healthcare, we've got about 1,100 employees. We have about 130 physicians. I think it's over that number now in advanced practitioner, APPs, physicians assistants and nurse practitioners. We have tripled our medical staff since 2010, when Lake Region Healthcare and the Fergus Falls Medical Group integrated and we began to operate all of the clinics. So again, it's a testament to the community because if it wasn't a strong community, we wouldn't get people to come to the community. But having tripled the medical staff triples the access for people. Our net operating revenue, that is, you know, net after we take away contractual adjustments and those types of things from patient care operations, we have some other revenue. When we monitor our performance, we don't measure what we make off of our investments and our reserves. We measure only operating revenue. So we have more money coming in through investments and reserves. But we're going to be about a $210 million business this year if we meet budget. And headquartered in Fergus Falls. This is our strategic footprint. You can see that we serve quite a few counties in Minnesota. If you kind of zoom in on where we are into the state, it's a pretty big footprint. It's one of the larger footprints. We cover a large geography. But we've got, again, all of these clinics in the regional communities. Sometimes healthcare organizations say, let's bring everything to the larger community and have people drive. We've tried to do the opposite of it. For instance, we used to be open in Ashby just two days a week with one doctor. We're now open in Ashby five days a week with a doctor and an APP. Creates access. Does that footprint make sense to people? Resonate? Next slide. This is our board. So this is the power of preserving our identity as a locally-owned, community-led, locally-governed healthcare organization. Our board members hail from our service territory. Most of them are in Fergus Falls because that's where most of our services are and our footprint is. But we're really happy that these folks volunteer their time to help lead us. Many of them are Fergus Falls community leaders, John Erickson and Chuck McFarland, both associated with Otter Tail Corporation for many years. Tindy Runn works with Fergus Falls School Districts, aligns our services with education. We have some providers on our board. Dr. Vassa is a hospitalist. And then Rebecca Basil is the first nurse and nurse practitioner that we've had on our board and she's from the Brandon Garfield area. And again, when you have folks in those communities making decisions on like risk and resources and strategy, they're the ones that can really keep that hometown perspective. And that's where, again, we're trying to be stewards of a community-owned resources because the people around here own the place, we don't. Next slide. Community impacts between Lake Region and Lake Region Medical Group. Again, about over 1,200 employees, part-time, full-time. We pump about $110 million into the communities that we serve through payroll and benefits. It's going to be a little bit more in fiscal year '26 because that's an old number from 2024. And in 56537, about 550 of our people call this zip code home. So many of the people that work at Lake Region hail from Fergus Falls. So I'll just pause there. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions, Kent? No, I think you're good. You're on the roll.
I have a passion for this place, so it comes, rolls off the tongue pretty easy. Next slide, if you would. So, you know, you're going to hear a lot about finance today. And the reason we talk about finance is if you don't have a margin, you can't accomplish your mission. Now, mission helps you accomplish the margin and achieve it, but they're too hand-in-hand. So sometimes at Lake Region Healthcare, maybe we weren't as good about talking about the margin as we could have been. And you're going to see what we've been doing about that over the last five years. However, safety and quality is really important. The government gives rankings through a star system to hospitals. And in '24 and '25, we've been able to get the highest ranking, five stars. That is a ranking that is going down because there's many things that affect organizations and their ability to be five stars. Workforce is very tough in healthcare. Some people aren't as engaged as they used to be in the services that we deliver. But CMS, which is the government agency that administers healthcare for the federal government, they measure mortality, safety of care, readmission, patient experience, and timing of effective care. So we scored really well and we're really proud of that. But that's the work of all the people that serve many of you and your community. So feel safe and that is quality care. Improving access through new providers. We really wanted to make sure that we didn't have to say no to people if they wanted to come to us and we found ourselves before 2023 saying no. We also wanted to grow services so we could increase revenue. So this is a picture of all the providers. Katie Johnson put this together of the providers that joined us in 2023 and 2024. So we have a good blend of MDs. We have a good blend of advanced practitioners. There's a medical doctor shortage. It's going to get worse in the upcoming years. That's why we're trying to bring nurse practitioners and physician's assistants into our organization because they can practice at a higher level. And if they're practicing at a higher level, then the physicians are practicing at the top of their license. So we're trying to mitigate against the physician shortage by bringing in APPs and PAs. They do a quality job. It's just sometimes they don't have the scope that an MD does. So the next slide, this is the new providers that have joined us so far in 2025. We have a new surgeon joining us in a couple of weeks and then a new OB-GYN to provide women's and children's health starting next month, in November. So there should be a couple more people there. We talk about patient growth and patient access. This is just a picture of our revenue growth through only patient revenue. So it doesn't count like our imaging studies and our lab services, but this is just revenue from patient access. So we really started to get intentional about this in '23. You can see what we've done each year and we've stepped up that revenue to about $200 million for just patient revenue. We want to try to accomplish over the next three years to get to $250 million. We think we can do that. And again, it's to invest in our people and our places and our things, not to just show, look how much money we made. This is what I wanted to share a little bit with what you. It'd take a long time to unpack this whole thing. But one of the things that we did is we had a little bit of a financial scare in 2023. And then it's at that time that healthcare became really hard. So we said if we want to sustain our independence, we need to come up with a way to change our reimbursement structure, improve our financial performance, and just create sustainability through some strategic interventions, aside from getting better at what we do every day. So we were thinking really hard for about 18 months and we came up with a New Waters strategic plan. It's multi-year, it's multifaceted. We'll probably be living in New Waters, so to speak, for another four years and then we'll figure out what to do after that. But again, to retain that identity as a locally-led and governed healthcare organization, which is important for our board, that's what they tell me to do and accomplish. That's the number one thing that they ask. What's the aim of it? We wanted to do a series of structural and operational changes, fortifying our financial performance, to come up with a better economic engine to fuel that promise to deliver certain things that are important to our people and the communities. Market benefits and pay because it's highly competitive and we ought to pay well and treat people well in benefits. Updated facilities, leading technologies, and all of that comes together to advance healthier communities because that's what this thing is all about. I mentioned before that we combined our two healthcare companies to create an innovative, single-company, multi-campus model. It's number two in the nation, not like number two from size, but it's only the second one that's been done like this because of the special circumstances that we have. And we kept banging away to try to do that because people kept telling us no and we found a way to do it. What that did, it allows us to achieve a different reimbursement model while not shrinking services, but growing services. So when we have this single-company model, we'll be able to be eligible for critical access reimbursement and 340B. Lots to unpack there, but it's just a better way to get paid by the federal government and to get pharmaceuticals less expensively. It just helps increase your margin for doing the same work, but you got to do a little bit differently. But combine our two hospitals allowed us to do that. So the next slide, I want to talk about our Fergus Falls campus priorities. When I stepped into the role, I recognized that our facilities were, in Fergus Falls, were, on the hospital side, were well-loved but tired. In 2013, we opened up the new medical office building, retired a 1960s building, and I think our community has thrived under that and we've grown physicians and APPs under that model. But our hospital building needs something done about it. The other thing that we dug into is we found out that our utilities, which are down in the basement of the hospital, were well beyond their useful life. Institutionally, it's something that we knew about. Institutionally, it's something we didn't do anything about. So now that's our number one priority because sometimes in the summer, when it gets really hot, our chilling systems don't have enough capacity and wherewithal to chill the whole building. So we turn air conditioning off in non-patient care areas. So patients are always taken care of and cooled, but some of us, others, aren't. We need to do something about that because our heating systems are old as well. Our newest boiler was installed when Truman was in office. And our most recent upgrade to our utility systems was in the 70s. We can't do anything about it in the basement because they're buried three walls in. So you'll see a picture of what we're going to do about that. The other thing is our campus is an assembly of kind of a Heinz 57 of buildings that have been around over the years, from the 1920s to the 1970s, a little bit in the 80s. But other than the medical office building and the cancer center, we've got a lot of old stuff for our main hospital and that's where most of our services are. So we talked about what's priority, emergency medicine. It's really important that we have safe spaces for people to be taken care of very efficiently. We also want to make sure that our law enforcement partners feel that they can manage some difficult patients well. So we're coming up with some better ways to create access that's secured, parking that's improved. But we're doing some planning around that now to see what the new building might entail for that service. Radiology and imaging services. We do a ton of imaging services, both for our providers and others. We have to have a better space because right now it's spread out all throughout our building and not very efficient. Surgical services and sterile processing. We've added two general surgeons this year. We need to increase our surgical capacity. We also have to make sure the way that we take care of our equipment for sterile processing is done well. So we need to expand that and we need to continue to get into robotics technology. There's a robot that's called a DaVinci that's probably on version five right now that we need to get for our surgeons because that's where healthcare is going. We don't have one yet. We have robotics technology in orthopedics, but we don't have it in surgery yet. So we want to get that as well. Labor, delivery, and birthing services. You know, our providers are great, our nurses are great, our space is not great for labor and delivery. So we have some people leaving the community and coming back for pediatrics. We've got to do something about that. And then therapy services, we've got many, many therapists all spread throughout the building. We've got to figure out what we're going to do with that. We want to create an efficient, flexible facility, chassis that can accommodate the future healthcare because it's dynamic and it's changing. So we don't want to build for today, we want to build in for the future. And while we develop this plan that is in process right now, we have to make sure it's on budget and in line with the schedule and that our board approves it. We don't have approval at all to do a facilities project. We're working on that right now to bring something to our board because we think it's important for our community. So this is our campus map. The purple there is kind of the best we could do to outline the property that we own. And you can see that it's a tight campus right now. We do have some residential homes that we've been using over the last years to house students, to house some of our leaders that have joined us until they can find housing and also to house some physicians that come to us on a temporary basis. That's one of the things that's changed in healthcare quite a bit. Oftentimes, you're getting physicians and specialties that don't want to locate in one community. They want to provide service on a contract basis. So they come to us for a few weeks and then they go to where they live and then they come back and so on and so forth. But we're working right now and trying to come up with a plan to optimize the square footage that we have on the campus. We've committed to this campus. We looked at some greenfield sites a number of years ago, but with the cancer center, with the new clinic, we know that we need to do it on this space. So we'll be talking more, maybe some of the planners at the city to talk about zoning and share with you what we're doing because we won't do anything without talking to you about it. That's important. This is a bird's eye view of the facilities. If you zoom in on a little bit, which you'd have to, you'd see that we try to collect the age of our buildings and that dark green tower in the center, that is our challenge and our opportunity. That's where surgical services are. It's outdated. The utility delivery systems in it are really tough. The building that's in the center of that picture right now, kind of that lighter tan, we foresee that tower sticking around. We made an investment in the helipad a number of years ago. It's expensive to replace. So we see that tower, which was built in the late 1970s, as stained. Structurally, it's intact. We just need to remodel and rework the inside of it. But if we can pull a plan together, we do not foresee that dark green area being around. Now, the benefit of that is we're able to demolish that space and create green space to build other buildings on that campus rather than having to spread out in the community or more in our footprint. So we don't know exactly what we'd build if we were able to pull this plan across, but we would reduce that square footage and have a little bit of a blank slate on that campus that would really allow us to go out and up. But what we're thinking about is putting a very modest, conservative, highly-functional, two-story facility with a basement on the campus to improve the ER, the labor and delivery, radiology, imaging services, and then help figure out a plan for therapies. So again, we're working on a planning project right now. We're interviewing construction management firms. We've got an architect selected. So we'll be sharing with you more about that into the future. But we feel like we're going to come up with a plan for the central utility plant presented to our board by the end of this December. I think the next slide has a little bit of a picture of that. If you've been on the campus, this is a picture of the backside looking north. So it's to the south of the hospital building where there's already some facilities, systems outside, large oxygen tanks and our chillers. We would build a very modest building, probably pre-cast concrete, and it would be very modular because as the campus grows, we'd be able to add the energy components that might be needed to serve. So we would put our chillers, we would put our boilers, and we would put our backup generators in this central utility or central energy plant. We would decommission the worn-out ones in our basement and this would plug into and play into our hospital building. Probably fuel Mill Street, would definitely fuel any or energize any additions we'd make on that campus as well. But this is a must-do to make sure that we can keep our hospital building functional. Even if we do nothing else, we have to do this to keep that building heated, cooled, and back up electrified. Project, and boy, it's probably about $14, $15 million. Don't take care of any more patients, but we keep continuity of operations. And why are we doing all of this New Waters strategic plan? It's an opportunity to strengthen and grow. We have a model that we're centered on you, whether you're our patients or our staff members or our partners. We're centered on you, surrounded by our values. And again, market benefits and pay, updated facilities, leading technologies, all to fuel healthier communities. So that's the update I had. Happy to answer any questions. Yeah, Jim?
The new C-Boc, VA C-Boc, is that going to decrease your revenues? Things are, they're going to do physical therapy there, they're going to do their own x-rays and all that kind of stuff?
It may affect some of the services that we provide for them, but access to those services for veterans is sometimes limited in the community. So we don't see it being a negative to our financial performance. We are happy because it's creating access for veterans in the community and I'm sure there's ways that we'll partner with them. We'll compete for staff a little bit. There's not enough nurses to go around. But yeah, we're proud to partner with them.
What is the plan for parking? Right now, we have a lot of, I think mostly staff would be my guess, that are parking on streets in these neighborhoods. What is the plan to address parking?
Yeah, we are doing a parking study right now. Architect firm is doing counts this week. And we need to come up with a opportunity to increase the parking that we have because if we're able to do an expansion, we're going to take up some parking. And right now, I think we're kind of at the point that if people would park in our lots, we would have capacity. And we need to be better at asking our people to park in the lots rather than maybe sometimes those things which are closer. But we do have enough room to cover everybody. We might be doing some things like valet parking, which sounds fancy, but it's not fancy, it's just practical. We shouldn't have to have people walk across lots. We can park some cars a little bit further of a distance. So when we talk about parking, we're going to be probably having to look at some of the houses that we have right now to maybe demolish those and put parking in place.
Do you foresee going outside of your footprint to do more parking into neighborhoods? Or are you thinking you'll stay within the footprint you have?
We really want to stay in the footprint that we have. The houses that you see within the purple area, I think, respect a longstanding understanding with the city that we would kind of stay there and not go beyond some of those streets. And you get into some historic houses and things like that. We are evaluating the ability to go vertical. What our architects have told us is we'll look at it, but it's very expensive. So every dollar we pay on parking, you take away from patient care space. If you think about what it costs to improve hospital space right now, it's about $1,000 to finish it out a square foot. So it's, it's really expensive to build this stuff, unfortunately. But if we can find a place for therapies, perhaps in the community, and build something there, because that doesn't have to be on the hospital campus, it relieves parking pressure for patients and staff and creates some easier access as well. So we need to look at that. But there's about, gosh, in any given day, kind of a close to 1,000 swings of our door for people coming in. And many of those people come from outside the community and they buy gas and they eat at our restaurants and they stay in our hotels and things like that. So we try to help the economy by bringing people in from the outside.
Scott? You mentioned that you merged the larger facility, larger organization into the smaller. Apparently, Fergus into Elbow Lake and maybe you could explain that a little bit.
Yeah. So when the government identified critical access as an opportunity to pay differently and it's kind of a cost-plus basis, they recognized that creating access to healthcare in rural communities with certain eligibility requirements need to be funded differently because we don't have the volume here that they have in an urban and a suburban area. Healthcare in St. Cloud, Minneapolis, St. Paul is a different game. It's still hard, but you've got the volume there. So some of the things we do, we just can't make enough revenue on to support, but we still have to be ready. We still have to have a doctor in the ER. We still have to have nurses in the ER, but they're not as busy as they are down in the cities. We still have to run ambulance services. In one market, we run an ambulance service. And it takes, on average, 11 minutes to get an ambulance to somebody in the metropolitan area. It takes almost twice that in rural areas to get an ambulance to respond. Not the distance issue alone, but just the resource issue. So when Elbow Lake got a designation, we found that by taking our companies and bringing them into one, that critical designation that our Elbow Lake Corporation had could be extended to other sites of care that qualified. So our Fergus Falls Hospital is an extension of the Elbow Lake Hospital now. But our Barnesville Clinic is a standalone because there's some technicalities of distance requirements between hospitals. So it doesn't change the way we lead, it doesn't change the services we provide. It's just a It's just a way of changing our structure to get a different type of reimbursement from CMS for a certain type of our patients. We communicated to our Medicare patients in a letter, about 16,000 or so people, that they might experience some different co-pays for a very small subset of our patients. But we felt that sharing this change with folks because their bills are going to look different before open enrollment started October 15th was important so they could make choices to buy supplements or an advantage plan because people can insure against that. And I think that went well. We've gotten just a few calls from people. We met with the brokers and sent letters out to them. But shouldn't change the care that you get. It just allows us to get paid differently for a number of our patients. And then also, there's a little bit of a different contribution formula for facilities capital. You get to claim some costs on a cost report, so it can help pay for some of the facilities. I mean, we're looking, if we can accomplish everything, we're over $100 million of new construction. It's expensive. But yeah, good question. It's very technical.
Thank you. With that, I think, thank you, Kent, for the update.
Yep.
And as always, good to have, obviously, health care locally when you need it. And like everything, you never know when you need it.
Right, right.
Until you need it.
Happy to be there. Not always happy that you've got a problem, but happy.
Yep. Thank you, Kent.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the Pebble Lake Golf Course lease agreement. I'm going to call upon Bill Sommore. The requested action is to extend the lease agreement with Pebble Lake Golf Course until December 31, 2026. Over to Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, that is a good, high-level summary. We're looking for a one-year extension on the current lease. Councilmember Mark Layton and city staff have been meeting with the golf board over the last number of months. The golf board is looking at what various improvements are needed out there, you know, be on the course versus the actual clubhouse, as well as some of the cart storage and whatnot. So they're in the process of that, looking at what projects and updates would look like. So they're not ready to bring stuff forward to the council yet. That will come. You will all participate in that process as we look at what does the future look like there. So the plan is for that to take place during 2026. Come to the council during 2026 with some of that information and get your thoughts on that. So for now, we would just want to extend the lease agreement, wording as it is, just changing those dates to the calendar year 26.
Mark, do you have anything to add?
I appreciate all the effort that Pebble Lake has put into this thing. Bill has indicated we have had our meetings with them. No different than what we've heard from Mr. Mattson today. This process, this project needs more study. It needs more collaboration. And rather than forcing that change before all the facts are in front of us, we felt one year would be an adequate time for us to continue that study. So again, it's the best thing to do is just extend this for one year and see how this thing, you know, if you will, how the clay plays out moving forward. So I appreciate the council's support on this expansion.
Would somebody care to make the motion? Mark, do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the lease for one year.
Right. Thank you, Mark. Would somebody care to second it?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laura. Any further discussion?
Mr. Sommore, I appreciate your time. Do we have any updates on revenue generation for 2025 at the golf course? And also, do we have any updates on any major improvements or things that were done out there this year that we know of?
I don't have that yet, but that's something we can get and get some, obtain their financial statements and get them out to you. As far as projects, Guy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but updates were made to the kitchen. You know, we had those issues with the air conditioning system and the range hood and the grease recirculation of that. The one system was moved out. We actually moved it down to our city shop, so that did not go to waste. It was used down there. We have more HVAC systems, work to do down at our city shop. But then the new system was installed, and that is completed, so that's ready for next season. That's probably the major thing. As far as out on the course, I don't know. They're always doing irrigation, repair and maintenance, you know, so many heads of the irrigation system a year.
They did upgrade, upgrade the irrigation system this year, all the heads.
Okay, good.
Anything?
Your Honor, to help my comrade, the financials have not been published even at the golf course level yet. I got an email yesterday that, as Bill well knows, the final bills are coming in. We're trying to put this one-year 25 behind us so that we can look at the finances. So those numbers are pending. They're just not available.
Thank you. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Motion is approved. Everybody good with consent agenda? It's fairly straightforward. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the traffic marking contract with Otter Tail County. Call upon Lynn Taylor, recommendation to the council to participate in the 2026 traffic marking program with Otter Tail County.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an annual resolution that we come to you looking for. We partner with Otter Tail County for the traffic markings. It's a matter of efficiency. We partner with them. The striping contractor comes in to do the roads, so it just makes sense that they do the county roads and the city roads at the same time. So the county manages this project. They submit or publish bids and take in the bids and award a contract and manage that. We do provide them with some assistance in marking our areas and a ride-along employee, just to make sure everything's covered. But it's an annual program. We did actually reduce the amount of striping we're doing. We used to do it twice a year. We're just doing it once a year now, just to reduce costs. And I think what we're seeing is that's effective. We're not seeing the lines totally obliterated within that year. So we don't feel that the twice a year is necessary, but just seeking the resolution to approve entering into that agreement with Otter Tail County for 2026.
Somebody care to make that motion?
I'll second that, and I have a question.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Laurel. Go ahead with your question.
In the packet, the letter from Otter Tail County referred to both a striping program and a seal coating program. Do we ever use them, or are they more economical than what we're doing in-house? Or how does that work?
It's been looked at in the past, and it's been, I guess, decided that it's more efficient to do that project, the seal coats and the overlays in-house. Their contractor is basically doing county roads, and in the city, it's different. You've got manholes, catch basins, valve boxes, all that. So it's a whole different game.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, the motion is approved. Everybody good with the consent agenda? The next item is highway and trail maintenance agreement, again with Otter Tail County. Guy will present this, a recommendation to the council to enter the highway and trail maintenance agreement with Otter Tail County. Over to Guy again.
Thank you, Your Honor. So there is an agreement similar to this in place. A few years ago, it sunsetted, and we're looking to enter into it again. The agreement basically is where the city and county have roads, you know, their roads are in our jurisdiction, basically. So it's just efficiency, again, where we're in an area doing work, they're out in the county doing their other work, and it just makes sense that we partner with them and we take care of things like pothole filling, crack filling, mowing along their right-aways, trail maintenance, things like that, that we're in city limits doing that type of work anyway. So it's just a matter of efficiency, and we will receive some reimbursement for our costs that we put into it. So each year, we will be paid by Otter Tail County $49,535.06 for the work that we do in their right-of-way. And the thing of, part of this is our residents have come to expect more services than what the county would typically provide. An example is the trail going out County Road 1. The county would say, we don't do trail maintenance in the winter, so that would not get swept, blowed, or plowed at all. So we know our residents expect that trail specifically to be cleared in the winter. So with the county not having that as part of their policy to do winter maintenance, we'll take that over, and we do get that reimbursement and provide the service to our residents.
So how do we determine $49,535.06?
I don't know where the six cents came in, but...
I knew you were going to ask that.
We looked at, I don't know how the original amount was determined from the previous contract, but we just added an inflationary cost to that and came up with the $49,000. So it's based on the amount of work that typically is needed to be done in their right-of-way.
Any other questions of Guy?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. That was my question, is how we come up with, you know, if you will, either the cost or the rewards of this contract with Otter Tail County for either service, the marking or the maintenance. I don't know if the county's ever gone out and quoted the marking, the maintenance part, as I suppose, their own staff. So is there some math that the levy committee can look at as to how this is structured?
We could provide you with the bids for the markings, the striping projects. We could get those from the county. So yeah, they do look at that each year, and they put it out for competitive bids. So it's not, it's typically the same contractor every year, turns out, but it's bid out to anybody. As far as the maintenance agreement, we can try to come up with some basis of how those costs were determined, but...
Moving forward would probably be helpless, Guy, but, and then again, in marking, our markings are the same. If we had 1,000 feet before, we got 1,000 feet this year, whatever that number is.
Right. Yeah, it's like 19 miles is what we contract for.
Right.
And it, basically, in the past few years, it's been increasing due to the price of paint.
Correct.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate your...
That one's a competitive bidding process, but the maintenance, obviously, isn't, and I'm assuming the county has more leverage because, as you say, they have 1,000 miles rather than 20 miles.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you, Guy.
All right. Would somebody care to make that motion? Have you already got that?
Nope.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Laurel.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions? If not, roll call, please.
Just a motion.
Motion.
Motion to bring it forward?
Yep.
All in favor?
Yep. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All those again, same sign. Hearing none, the motion is approved, and everybody good with the consent agenda?
Yes, and you're still worried about the six cents? Is that what's kind of...
Yeah, yeah.
We'd like to know by Monday.
Yeah, it's whether we can round it up. So the next item on the agenda is Federated Church Traffic Light. Again, Lynn Taylor, recommendation to the council to authorize an encroachment agreement with Federated Church.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you'll probably have noticed, this is an after-the-fact agreement that we're looking for you to approve. The church at the corner of Union and Summit was built way before there were requirements for off-street parking. And with a number of their congregants needing parking space, the street is utilized a lot on both sides of Union, up and down Summit, and all over the place, for sure. So they saw increasing need for safety awareness, and they came up with the idea of the sign that's installed currently at the corner of Union and Summit. And they will operate the sign. They've got, it's solar-powered, but they do have a way to operate that sign from within the church, and they will operate it during services, events, funerals, weddings, whatever. But it is in the city's right-of-way, but it's their cost for installation, and they will operate it. So we look to the city for an encroachment agreement for that.
Would somebody care to make that motion?
I'd make the motion.
Thank you, Mark. And?
Second.
Second, who, Al? Al, discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign. Hearing none, the motion is approved. We will go to, everybody good on consent agenda? It's fairly clean. The next item is temporary easement at 2410 Lakeview Drive. Again, Lynn Taylor, recommendation to the council to garner a temporary easement at 2410 Lakeview Drive for planned maintenance work.
Thank you, Your Honor. If you'll remember, a few weeks ago, resident Scott Murray came to the open forum and let you know of a storm sewer issue adjacent to his property. At that time, we had a quote in hand, and we're waiting on a second quote to complete the repairs there. In looking at the project with the contractor, noticed that there was no easement there for any utility maintenance. So we've got a contractor secured, and we just need a way to get into the property legally and complete the work, which hopefully will be done this fall. But the easement agreement is temporary in that more engineering didn't have time to get out there and do the survey work this fall to get a permanent easement in place. So that survey work will be done next spring, and Permanent Language will come to you for approval. But as you can see on the screen, the red line drawn through the property depicts where the easement will end. It'll start at the west line and extend over to the east 85 feet, and that'll give us enough room to complete the work. The sewer, the storm sewer line comes in up in the northwest-ish corner of the property. So we'll have plenty of room there to do the work, but we need this temporary easement just for legal access.
Somebody care to make that motion?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Jim. Somebody care to second it? Scott? Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Taylor, when is the proposed work scheduled to be done there?
As I mentioned, we're hopeful this fall yet. We don't have a solid date, but we do have a contractor who said that it should still fit in his schedule.
With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Motion is approved. Everybody good with consent agenda to help Mr. Murray gets his stormwater sorted out. The couple of new items, recommendation to deny tobacco license for Smoke &amp; Cloud. Over to Bill Sommore.
Right. Thank you, Your Honor. Counsel. Yeah, back on October 20th, the city council on that agenda was a license application for Cloud Trading, Inc., doing business as Smoke &amp; Cloud, for a tobacco license. And that tentative approval was given by the city council at that meeting, you know, pending the rest of the work that goes on in all licenses through the police department and whatnot. Since that time, the check that they paid their $100 fee was drawn on a closed account. So the city did not receive the fee. So according to City Code Section 111.04, you know, that fee has not been paid in full, so that application is not valid. So the request is simply then for you to deny that license. Am I missing anything on there, Lynn? Okay.
Would somebody care to make that motion?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions or discussion?
I just have a couple of questions. Have they been notified that it bounced?
Lynn or Andy, do you?
No, they haven't.
Okay. And is that typical? Like if a city, someone bounces the check to the city, is that normal? Or how does that normally get handled?
You know, if... You know, if, I'm thinking like with utilities, if we receive bounce checks for that, we add those charges back to their utility account is what we typically do on that one and certainly try to collect the NSF fees and whatnot, but...
Your Honor, this wasn't a bounce check, this was a check on a closed account that they knew was closed. I mean, so I don't, I'm not, a bounce check could happen to anybody, but closed account? No.
Thanks, Mr. Sommore, I appreciate it. Do they have the ability to come back then and reapply, redo everything, pay their fee?
I believe so, that would be correct, right?
They do, and to your point, on the closed account, it is illegal. And again, to Mr. Sommore's account, for example, if somebody wrote a check to the liquor store and on a closed account, that would come to the police department after they were notified, and then we would do an investigation.
Thank you.
Well, I learned something today. I didn't notice it's illegal to write a check on a closed account. I'll stop doing it. Not recommended.
I have a couple of them in my desk drawer.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, we need a motion? I thought we had a motion, Scott and Scott. Yep. Scott and Scott. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign. Hearing none, the motion is approved, everybody good, can you go on the consent agenda? The next item on the agenda is street lighting contract with Otter Tail Power Company. And I think Lynn Taylor is probably gonna introduce it, and we have Nate Cundy from Otter Tail Power in the audience to help with that.
Thank you, Your Honor.
That's all I've got, just this street lighting contract with Otter Tail Power.
Yeah, so we began a streetlight conversion project with Otter Tail Power a few years ago.
Twenty-nineteen.
Twenty-nineteen. And so, we've done quite a bit of work in phases. We're down to two last projects, which, it'll be called the Washington Corridor, which obviously Washington's included, and then the side streets, Court Mill and Cascade, and some on Sheridan, I think. And then the access road into D Lagoon Park, D Lagoon Park Drive, we'll put some lighting in there potentially. So, Otter Tail Power installs at their expense, they own and they operate the lights. Anytime there's a accident where a light is hit, that's their, dealing with their insurance. We don't have any dealing with the streetlights then after that. So, the benefit to the city upfront is significant, but then long-term, it is as well. We will retain ownership of certain streetlights, the decorative lights on Lincoln between Union and Cascade, the decorative lights on the south side of Lake Alice, and the decorative lights up at the RTC. So, we're not totally out of the light business, but ninety-eight percent, probably. Another part of this is Nate will present costs and the project in more detail, but this is for your information this morning, and then information then will be taken up by the tax levy committee at their next meeting. And then, hopefully, this will be on the agenda for November seventeenth, potentially on the consent agenda.
Okay, so today is just informational, there's no decision to be made?
Yes.
Right, thank you.
Nate? All right, good morning, thanks, Guy. As Guy mentioned, these are future-year projects, so we would be looking at, if we got the contract signed yet in twenty-five, construction throughout twenty-six. The Washington Corridor project has an in-service date of twenty-seven, so that's when you would see the budgetary impact of the largest one. So, I'll go through just some overview. Some of these slides are gonna look familiar because this is like the fifth lighting project I think I've done in front of you guys, so hopefully it's the last one. Just like to start our presentations with some of our company values. You probably heard me say this again, but community is one of our company values. So, when we have a lot of our municipalities that had muni-owned lighting that was reaching end-of-life, it has a significant cost to build it out. And they turned to us and said, well, what can you offer? We didn't have much at the time, other than, you want a wood pole there? And oftentimes, they said, not really, what else do you got? So, we developed a tariff with, you know, a handful of other offerings, such as our aluminum alloy and our decorative that we've been using all around town, to be able to take a cost-effective approach for our communities, to be able to, one, get their lighting replaced, but two, not have a large financial burden in front of them. So, next slide, please. Current state, as Guy mentioned, what is left is really what we're dubbing as the Washington Corridor, as far as the muni replacement goes. This is gonna be the last project of municipal replacement that we have in scope. As Guy mentioned, the other three areas are still in good service, have a lot of life left in them. We have no intention of taking those over, or replacing those, I should say, at this time, because they still have useful life in them. So, what you have right now, out on Washington and the side streets, are steel standards. It's not a surprise, a lot of them are rusted, a lot of them are dented, a lot of them are leaning. You actually had one last winter, or spring, actually fall over, just wasn't hit by a car, just rusted out and fell over right in front of the chamber office. That's not unique to this vintage. I've lived in other communities, dealt with this in other communities, where it's actually rusted out and came down on a passing car through their windshield. So, just something to keep in mind that, you know, maybe you argue that, say, well, they look fine, structurally, they're reaching their end-of-life very quickly. They require ongoing maintenance, anything that's old, you're dumping money into it, so quit dumping money into something that's already reached its end-of-life. There's no breakaway bases on here, all of our aluminum alloys, as well as our decorative fixtures, have a crash rating and kind of a, what they call it, a breakaway base, so the standard is hopefully reusable. It doesn't act like just a big pillar that the car hits, it's actually designed that it's supposed to break, clear the car, the vehicle that hits it, so improved safety in that regard. Again, like Guy mentioned, you guys don't have any maintenance, you don't have to do the utility locating, there's a potential to save on your insurance premiums. Right now, these lights are being charged on an energy-only rate, so they're not metered. But what that means is that we don't have a maintenance contract with Otter Tail Power to do those. You have to hire an electrician anytime that you work on any of that, because it is, in the state's eyes, privately held, it's not held by a utility company. Just some pictures of kind of what you got going on. A lot of these are, you know, what's already been in scope for replacement projects, so some of this is gonna be on Vernon, some of this is gonna be on Lincoln and Union, et cetera. But the picture on, with the open handhole there, you can see there's a porcelain block in there, that's actually what is the connection that goes up to feed the actual lighting fixture with a screw-in bus fuse, right? So, if you think of like your breaker panel in your house, you don't have screw-in fuses, a majority of us don't. And if you were to have that, or have issues with that, you would get it replaced with a breaker panel, okay? Well, the same thing is kind of held true in the lighting industry as well, in the utility industry. We don't see open contact porcelain that can, I mean, seriously, the connections are live there. If they were to get up against the pole, the pole becomes energized, because it's a steel conductor, right? So, there's just been a lot of advancements in this, they're all circuit breaker protected, they're all ground fault protected. So, just the updated wiring alone is improvement for pedestrian safety. But again, you have just typical paint issues, ground line issues, go ahead. You have some failing wire, we've had some that we've had, you've replaced temporarily with overhead. I don't believe that there's any on Washington that I have temporary, but as a result of the Junius Road Project, the side streets on the south side of Washington are now dark, with no plan to get those repaired or in service unless we move forward with a contract yet this year. Go ahead. Again, just some general pictures of kind of what you got going on, next slide. Again, you see my little Trump side, age liability. Again, just a lot of your stuff is, it's reaching end-of-life.
Nobody does lighting better than us, everybody's talking about it.
Go ahead. So, again, this is the final phase of the muni-owned lighting that you have, that we are looking to replace with tariff offerings. So, hopefully, this is the last time coming in front of you for a muni replacement lighting. You have, what I'll present today is actually two contracts, Guy referenced it, it's the muni replace project, as well as the D Lagoon addition. So, in the Washington Corridor, there's forty-four lights that we're proposing to install. Twenty-eight of those are gonna be aluminum alloys, so if you picture what's coming down Lincoln, what we have, some on Union, we have the ones going out on Pebble Lake, very comparable to what's out there now. We have, I believe, there's sixteen decorative standards, which are gonna be a continuation on from Union, around the block here to City Hall. So, in front of City Hall will be the decorative grandvilles, which, if you look out the window, that's exactly what they look like, that's what they are. Our post-top, black, similar to what we've been putting on the pavilions, downtown area, kind of tie it all in. Junius, actually, the first two blocks of that has it, so in front of the police station, the church, courthouse, also has grandvilles. So, be a nice tie with everything, and then as you go east, they'll turn into the aluminum alloys. I apologize, our designing software in the infancy stages of it does not provide a very good, like, PDF staking sheet. But any of these red dots represent one of our light locations. These are subject to change when it comes into construction phase. So, we have the latitude, when we get the locate called in and we say, okay, here's where we surveyed out the light to go, and there's conflicts, we have no problem adjusting it by a couple feet if we need to. Or the city says, hey, this is a tough radius to make, can we move it six feet? Or can we move it to the other side of the street? We're not MINDOT, we can absolutely move whatever we need to move, whenever we need to move it. Go ahead, please. Again, here's kind of the second part of the staking sheet, so you can kind of see what's on Sherman, goes around to Sheridan. If you remember, earlier this year, we did a, in the middle of a lighting project, or finishing up a lighting project, kind of on the side streets, on the north side of Lincoln, south of Kevore, they go all the way to the bridge. So, we're wrapping the lighting back around up to the bridge to kind of meet where that phase of the project left off. I'll just stop there, questions on the Washington Corridor project before we jump into the D Lagoon one? Maybe go up to the first info slide, again, keep going, going, no, back, 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 back. Right there, okay. Cost. Annual cost, twenty-six thousand dollars for the final phase, annual. Like the annual cost, probably had the monthly stuff in there before, so just to put that into perspective, I think you may be seeing another slide, the last lighting project that the city did, it's twenty-fifteen, twenty-three lights up at the RTC, cost you about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in twenty-fifteen for twenty-three lights. So, that's about eleven thousand dollars per light. If you were to be able to buy one of my aluminum alloy poles, install it, you would have to be able to do that for eleven thousand dollars, and you'd recognize a thirty-year payback of what you paying per month for us. That's without the cost of energy, or the maintenance, or locating the underground facilities. So, you pay about thirty dollars a month for each one of those aluminum alloy poles. Yep, so questions on the Washington Corridor one?
No, I think we can keep moving, Nate.
Okay. D Lagoon has a, this is a new lighting project, a new proposal, obviously, there's a new campground out there. We hope to see a lot more increased use in traffic out there as a result of that. So, what we've proposed is twenty-seven new lights. These would be on thirty-foot wood poles, they'd have a LED thirteen fixture, so the volume of them, as far as like how condensed they are, they're gonna be way more spread out. But instead of using an LED ten, like we see in town here, we've increased that to an LED thirteen, it just has a larger footprint for the light. Cost of that one was, I think, thirteen thousand annually. We plan to put in all underground conductors out there, so there'll be no overhead, you'll just see it kind of similar to what we did on College Way, wood pole, underground conductor. Okay. Here is the design, red is new. I apologize again, it's tough to see, but each one of those little dots, red dots, is a light, the red lines are proposed underground facilities to feed those. Again, we're looking at the entrance road and the park drive or the circle that goes around the ball fields, soccer fields, as well as the boat landing. Go ahead. So, again, we've already touched on a lot of this, but one of the things I want to highlight here is they're low cost, there's no upfront cost of the city, everything is billed on a flat monthly tariff, okay? So, there's no, well, you use this much energy, or the meter this, during this month was larger than it was in this month, you'll see that, you know, monthly throughout the year, with just how much sunlight there is. This is a flat monthly fee, it's easy to budget, it's easy to predict. Our rates don't change unless we file a rate case with the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission. Street lighting is like low priority for rate change, it's not a moneymaker for us, right? Going back to our values, we want to see the investment in our communities, we want to see our communities thrive, because that's how we thrive as a company. Again, no maintenance, and you have potential for reducing your liability. Go ahead. So, again, we've already kind of touched on a lot of this stuff, too, but it's cost-effective, we're improving the safety for the community, our pedestrians, et cetera. Visually, it's a much-needed upgrade, in my opinion. And then, two, I mean, the last thing, we're just, it demonstrates a visual investment into the community. I mean, you had Lake Region Healthcare coming up here, talking about attracting and retaining physicians, employees here. People want to live in a place that, you know, looks nice, is well-taken care of. This is a way, simple way that we can do that, it's cost-effective. Again, it's, something's gonna have to be done eventually, whether you continue to operate it and dump money into it, or replace it on your own, or choose to continue to partner with us. So, what we're installing, again, you've seen this, we use these helical screw-in bases, there's our aluminum alloy pole, I got some pictures, again, on the next slide. So, there it is in front of Walgreens, our decorative ones are the ones on Spies Pavilion, the grandvilles. As I've mentioned before, on our LED Cobra Head style, we have gotten, you know, maybe some complaints, we put a new light up, and they say, oh, it's bright, it's shining in my windows. We have the opportunity to make adjustments with those. They are, one, the pitch of the head is actually adjustable, but the second piece, we have a trespass shield that we can put on there, that stops that backlight from shining on that house. So, if we have residents that end up with one of these in their yard, or businesses, or downtown apartments, we can make some adjustments as needed, and they're usually pretty effective. We already touched on this stuff. Again, I mentioned the, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the RTC fixtures. So, what we want to do is execute our lighting contracts, they are standard contracts, they're approved by the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission, it's the same contract that you've executed for the last, whatever, sixty-five phases of lighting that we've done. The decorative and the aluminum alloy have significantly long lead times, which is why if we get under contract now in twenty-five, I can order already tail end of this year or into twenty-six, we would expect delivery, you know, end of Q1, beginning of Q2. That really aligns with our construction timeline and our construction plan to be able to do this during the late Q2, Q3 in-service in late Q2. to do this during the late Q2, Q3 in-service in late Q4. Billing starts in January. That's mostly for the Washington corridor project. The D Lagoon one, I said, can be delayed if needed. However that shakes out budget-wise, wood poles, underground conductor, we have those readily available. We can do that project anytime. We can do it tomorrow if you want it. Well, maybe not the underground piece, but, okay. So questions for me, comments?
On the D Lagoon, would that impact, obviously, you know, kind of usage at all when you're doing the install? Or not, not too much?
No, very minimal. We would be parked probably on the side of the roadway at each location for, probably take us about an hour to set the pole. And then as far as the underground installation goes, we would, a majority of that is going to be plowed. So you'd see a cable plow running in the ditch. We would usually run a chunk of conduit with that, or an interduct is what we call it, and bore the roadway. So as far as like usability of it, very minimal impact while we're doing construction.
Thanks.
Scott?
I think for the most part, once this is done, people don't even know you did it. You know, you come and go, and it's light pole, and it's light pole. But what people, what I've heard some comments on, particularly around Lake Alice, is the nature of the new lights is that they're very harsh and very projector-like, very, the shadows are very sharp and very projector-like. Doesn't have the same diffused light quality that used to be there. That's what's been noticed. They couldn't care less about the poles, aluminum alloy or anything like that, nobody cares. But when the light is harsh and the shadows are harsh, I'm wondering, as you showed the diagram of the Cobra Heads, if there's an adapter or a diffuser that can be used to soften that harsh projector-style light?
Yep. So the, are you talking like on the green decorative lighting on the south side of Lake Alice?
On the more standard style.
The Cobra Head style?
Right.
Yeah, so with moving to LED, what you're maybe referring to would be like a light refractor of what the old HPS Cobra Heads were like. So it's essentially a molding of how the glass or the lens was and how it refracted the light and how it let it come through. With LED, we don't see that because it's designed to be a directional-type light with a specific light pattern. How you get away from the, you know, the sharp contrast also helps reduce the amount of glare, though. So if you were to go back on, in your memory of a rainy day with all the orange high-pressure sodium lighting, and you would see if you even like kind of squinted, or you had the, you know, rain on your windshield, you would see the light patterns or the streaks of light. And the LEDs are really meant to change that so we don't end up with what they call light pollution. So it is intentional that it's directional, and you don't have a lot of wash or light pollution with it.
Well?
Thank you very much. Again, I appreciate Navway's head, appreciate it, Otter Tail Power. In regards to total number of streetlights Fergus Falls has compared to the number that you own and we, if you will, subscribe, I just haven't had an opportunity to look at the current city policy in regards to who's insuring. And I don't know if those numbers of light poles that are currently on the policy for the city are correct. I don't know. Bill, go ahead, please.
And Guy, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but we've looked at that in the past, and it's those decorative poles, they are called out specifically in property in the open, right?
Right, the ones that I mentioned.
So RTC, Lake Alice, and downtown are the ones we own and will continue to own. That's the ones we'll be insuring. Our property in the open would still cover Washington right now, but when that turns over to Otter Tail Power, then we'd just be left with those three groups of decorative.
And in regards to the decorative that we've got, is that something that you would assume that ownership and subscribe to us?
Not with the three that are in place because they're outside of our standard offerings. So we're, why we can do this cost-effectively is because across our entire organization, right, we offer five light types. So the same one that get installed out in Carrington, North Dakota, that gets hit by a car, we only have to warehouse one type. So when it gets hit by a car here in Fergus, we have one in our warehouse that we can get. We don't have to wait and order a specific one. So the only way that we would probably entertain doing the other three projects would be if we could come in and replace them with our standards. But again, there's plenty of life left in that. You're looking at a cost increase to go to a decorative tariff with us, run what you have into the ground, and then let's talk.
Thank you, thank you. So the policy has been corrected and updated, and we just need to make the next step when this next project is done. Thank you.
On the D Lagoon project, is that something where we can, Bill and Guy, look at rates to encompass the cost of that into our campground rates to try and recoup that so it's kind of taken care of in that process?
Something to think about. Yeah?
I don't believe, Your Honor, I don't believe there's any lights in the campground. I don't think, is there?
Right, but it's access to it still.
There's a couple.
Right, okay. Yeah, and that's somewhat intentional. Nobody, yeah, the only ones in the campground would be like the public boat access, and then I think one or two on the entrance road, which would be near the RV dump station.
And then I think there's one at the shower house, too, I think, is there not?
I think there's a light pack on the building.
And then we've added one for, by the gate at the gun range.
Yep.
The police department can pay for that.
Any other questions?
Mike, do you have a question?
Just a comment. Mr. Cooney, I appreciate you being here today. Appreciate your connection with Otter Tail Power. They're vital to our community, and this just makes our community look better. Other than cost, why did we go with a wood pole out at D Lagoon and not aluminum? Was there, is it just a cost issue?
Cost.
Okay. It could be in aluminum if we had the option.
It could be anything you want. Aluminum alloy is double what a wood pole is.
Okay, yeah. So, and the wood pole, would they have like those, you kind of have a stringer out with the light that comes out from it, just a metal stringer? Are they going to be set right on the pole?
Yeah, we could use anywhere from a four-foot to a six-foot, basically bracket arm is what we call it. Yep.
Kind of a stringer, all right. Sounds good, thanks.
So very, if you drive down College Way, basically in front of M State, that's what we'd be proposing.
What would the cost difference be on our contract? I mean, I get the cost of the fixture is double. What would the cost change on our contract be to go to aluminum?
Yeah, that's what I was referring to.
That would be double, too?
Yeah, aluminum alloy, well, maybe not quite. So with an LED 13, I think you're about $23, $24 roughly on a wood pole. You know, within, well, that would cost the same. So the light type would be the same. You would get charged an additional $12 a month per aluminum alloy pole, is how our fixtures go. So like your aluminum alloys, you're actually paying two separate tariffs. You're paying a tariff for the LED 10 in town, which is the light fixture, the Cobra Head style fixture on there, which is right around $18.23 if I remember correctly. And then you're paying an additional $11 and it's either 87 or 67 cents a month to have it on the aluminum alloy. With that, there's 200 feet of underground conductor that's packaged with each one of those. So out in D Lagoon, when you get the contract, you'll notice that there's additional cable footage at 11 cents per foot because you're exceeding the 200-foot span of included underground conductor. Also with a wood pole, when we go underground versus overhead, there's an additional $2.52 on top of that, $2.52 a month to have the serviced by underground because we have to locate it. With the span lengths that we're having proposed out at D Lagoon, overhead is not a viable option. It would, we'd have to set additional poles, and then we get into additional costs. And it just, it's ugly. It doesn't hold up well. Poles end up leaning. We'd have to guy a bunch of it, so you'd have anchors them all around, et cetera.
Go ahead.
Nate, you mentioned for the Junius Avenue project and the streets north and south that went dark. You can do some temporary?
Yeah, so when the Muni lighting that's on the side streets went dark as a result of the Junius one, because we are doing the replacement on Junius, there was nothing accounted for construction-wise to re-feed those lights. So what we proposed to Guy is in the interim, at our light locations for the winter, we would maybe do some concrete removal of where we have planned to put a helical base in, set a temporary wood pole, and string just some temporary overhead to get those side streets lit up during the winter months here yet this year. We wouldn't charge anything construction-wise. You would just get charged the monthly tariff for the light, similar to what you would on any other street in town. And then when it comes time to build the replacement white-way system, we would just remove the wood pole and put our helical pier in there. But again, it's kind of like, we don't really want to go through all that work if we're not going to do the contract. We'd rather come up with a more permanent option or say, well, fix what you have there then, so.
Bill?
One question regarding the municipal contract and that temporary lighting, is that still, is your timing okay if we come back to the November 17 meeting on that one?
Yep, since we're looking at doing overhead conductor, I mean, we could, we can do that technically even in frozen ground conditions.
Right, okay. Just didn't want to hold that up if we, if we're delaying two weeks, so.
No, but I mean, if, if things are looking like it's moving in the positive direction, I mean, even without the contract being executed, I'm fine with saying, all right, we have our locations planned. Let's just forge ahead.
Jim?
When you connect these, you say you get 200 feet of wire. Do we actually splice that, or do you run wire between the poles all the way so there's no splicing?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we do a footage aggregate, right, per fixture. So we look at the project, so like our Washington corridor, you may have a fixture that is over 200 feet away from the feed point, but the next one is maybe only 150 feet. So we take an aggregate look and say, okay, what are our span distances from our feed points and our lights to lights and how we have to feed those? Divide that by the total number of lights, and you actually end up with like 167 feet is the average span length for the Washington corridor project. So you don't have an additional charge on top of what's already packaged with the aluminum alloy. At D Lagoon, same thing. We take a look at, okay, you have 27 lights. Our total span length out there was, oh, man, I don't even remember, 8,000 feet or so. And I think where we have in the contract, I don't remember if it's like 4,400 feet of additional footage.
Yeah.
So, so you're actually doing splices then, or are you going out to a junction box?
Yeah, so, oh, okay, I mean, like how we actually build it. So Washington, you'll have interduct that runs from one of those helical piers to the next helical pier. We have a, they call it a Polaris connector in each one of those breakaway bases that is essentially an aluminum block connector that is insulated to 1,000 volts, and we use that to kind of daisy-chain them, if you will, right? So we don't have underground splices because we put everything in a duct. That way, if conductor fails, we're not ripping concrete back up, we're just pulling it in.
I was thinking more D Lagoon.
Yep, well, same thing. We would, very similar to what we did on College Way, we have actually a electrical connection box at the base of the pole, and we bring a duct up into the box, and we still use those Polaris connectors in the box, so we don't end up with underground splices.
Okay. I was just wondering about all the splices with the 200 feet, because you're going to be more than 200 feet away from them.
Yeah, no, we, we don't, we don't say, we don't have pre-cut lengths of wire at 200 feet that said, oh, anything more, we got to tack on. We'll try to make a continuous span, yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, less comment.
Real quick, yeah, sorry.
Then we're done.
Initially, you'd proposed Granvilles all the way through the Washington corridor?
Yep.
And then Andrew, Bill and I, we drove around and looked at it, and we pared that back quite a bit. Do you want to just speak to that amount that was reduced?
Well, I'd still like to see the Granvilles, so.
It costs a lot of money.
They do. So the original proposal, when we looked at the entire lighting replacement, right, so back in 2019, and what we, you know, thought might be a good fit for decorative, the whole Washington corridor, all the way from Union to Cascade and even a little bit in front of Veterans Park, was originally proposed as Granville, including the side streets. So you have essentially the entire downtown campus, Lincoln, all the way down to Junius would be decorative lighting. Obviously, that's about $50 more per month per fixture. So when we had the original proposal, Guy, Bill, Andrew came back and said, well, this is maybe a little bit too pricey. What can we do to pair that back? We had our engineer, Sidney, do a new lighting design using our aluminum alloy. That actually gets us a little further out on the lighting spacing, so you have, you know, fewer structures. It's a reduced cost. So the design we have here, I think, is very economical and very complimentary of kind of what we already have.
We just wanted to keep in mind, too, keeping it looking aesthetically pleasing here at City Hall, and then with our neighbors to the south of the county, too.
Don't worry about them.
Your neighbor's on Cascade, wouldn't mind some decorative lighting there.
I'll let you do it.
All right, thank you, Nate.
All right, thank you.
Obviously, this will go back to the tax levy, and then they will kind of see where the budget sits. So from an announcement point of view, obviously, November 1st to December 1, the pilot project for the four-way stops on Lincoln and Court and Lincoln and Mill will start to take place. We'll obviously bring that up again on Monday evening. November 3rd, city council meeting. November 11th, most city offices and facilities will be closed in observation of Veterans Day. The liquor store will be open. Garbage and recycle, normally picked up on Tuesday, will be moved to Wednesday. November 12, there will be a 7 o'clock committee of the hall. With that...
Can I ask one question? Sorry, it'll be fast. Is tax levy looking at Humane Society funding at all? Because I've gotten a couple of questions on that.
Mark, do you want to answer that one?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Is tax levy looking at Humane Society funding?
We're looking at this year's budget to see whether there's capacity within this year's budget to do a number. With that, we are adjourned.